This is our follow-up to the budget. As you know, first interim is in its regular state of meeting. And our intention to shoot is to make sure that there were no surprises for the board. So there's not a lot of changes that have occurred since our last meeting. Dr. Merson will go through some of the adjustments and assumptions that will be going into issues for interim. Thank you for that reason.
Yeah, good evening, Board. So like Dr. Casper said, I'm just here tonight to provide you with an update. I think there was two pretty other iterations of meetings that we gave updates on changes, the major changes that we're seeing for first interim, such as staffing, costs going up, contracted services, supplies. And today we're going to give you what else we know. First interim is being finalized and it's due to the county this week. And we have to present it to you by the sixteenth. And so let's get into it. So here is our twenty-five, twenty-six adopted budget MYP. This is just for reference. This is where we were at June at adopted budget. We had a 6.8 million deficit and our percentage was at 3.91. And so the updates since the last time we met here for first interim are the major changes. At adopted budget, we had a 200, reflecting a 200 student loss in our budget, along with 60% unduplicated percentage count. And so now that CalPats Day has came and gone by, we've certified our actual final numbers is 330 student loss. So we updated that enrollment number. And then our unduplicated percentage count came in slightly less than 60% that we were budgeting. It came in at 58%. And so that impact to the budget, to the LCFF funding would be about 641,901 and $3.2 million loss of funding in year three. And so that will be one of the major changes. And we've updated our projections to reflect like a loss of 330 students going forward. And so we're accounting for that as well. And we're done.
So, sorry, can I just ask? So, and this, the assumption on this is that our attendance stays consistent?
So actually, our attendance, that's a good point. Our attendance, we bumped up from 94% to 95%. And so, sorry, I didn't have that in me, but that is a change that is reflected in our LCFF. So we increased our attendance rate. We saw it go up, hopefully continues to go up because that does make an impact on our funding. It'll offset some of the loss of the students. Hopefully, we maintain 58% unduplicated account going forward. That is the biggest driver as that unduplicated account is driven by the alternate income household forms that we sent out to staff, family to fill out beginning of every year. And as we see that students are, the decline is evident. Most, what we're, our assumption is that those, the families are filling out those and qualify for the, you know, sweet income forms. And so we're seeing those are the families that are not attending our school district. For whatever reason, it could be cost of living. But so that is, that is the goal, is to try to maintain a 58% or higher. So every year, we're going to continue to push that out to parents and families and try to get that data as much as we can.
Sorry, I have another question, just related to the loss of enrollment. For the additional, or maybe not even additional, but like for the 330 students that, you know, the decline, do we know for those who are not continuing, right? So the difference, there's a difference between those who don't enroll new, right? Versus those who don't continue, do we know the ones who are not continuing the primary reasons?
We, we do have exit code data. It's the, we know where they leave, if they leave to another district within the county. We know whether they leave to another school outside of the state. But in terms of anything else than that, more than that, we don't know like the reasoning or rationale unless someone has shared something with a member of the school side, they got another job. But that's all the data shows us is which schools they've left to within the county or outside of the county. And we have, we have that data.
Part of the reason I ask is, I mean, I think it is helpful to know that information, but also with some of the immigration enforcement activities, I would be very curious to see if that's impacting our enrollment, if we're seeing that some of our undocumented families are withdrawing from the district or, you know, leaving the area. Because I do think that's information that's helpful for us to have as we're speaking with, you know, elected officials that are kind of higher up the chain.
Okay, thank you.
And we're also working with a demographer right now to complete a demographic study on 10 to 15 year projections. And now years to see what's happening in the city with the new developments that are rebuilt. Are we expected to see any students add or is along with, they're taking a look at birth rates as well. So you'll see declining enrollment. This is a lack of, this is birth rate decline.
Dr. Merz on this page where you're talking about the unduplicated account. The concentration grant goes up next year and then down the following. Can you explain that to me?
It's a average. So it's like a rolling average. So as we, so the LCFF is funded on either the current year and previous year, three-year rolling average. And so what's happening here is that there's years that are, years that are falling off that we had a higher percentage.
Okay, one more question on this page. Can you refresh my memory? I recall something about, like if we drop below a 55% unduplicated, that changes our formula. Could you explain that?
Yeah, so if we drop below the 55%, you're at risk of losing your concentration grant funding. So anything above 55%, you get a little bump extra. So that's where it shows you that $3.5 million. Those are funds that are sent to target additional supports for those specific students that qualify for like, you know, your unduplicated account. And so if you go, the lower you go on your percentage, that 21 million just gets reduced. And that would have a significant impact because that's what we utilize for all of the LCAP goals, intervention supports, everything that we provide for our students.
Yeah, and I'll just add that although the emphasis of this slide is on our unrestricted revenue, that loss of unduplicated students or that reduction in the number of unduplicated students also affects categorical funds like ELOP and our title funds as well.
Yeah, because a lot of the Title I funds is based on that percentage. So if we get like $2.3 million of Title I funding, the lower we get on this unduplicated account, the lower those annual dollars are as well.
And I'll just, although I said at the last meeting, there's some people here that weren't here at the last meeting. I do want to just share appreciation for our, our food and nutrition services, our school sites, and our technology services, everyone coordinating, including student support services to get this unduplicated student count as high as possible. That benefits us all. So thank everyone for the work that goes into this process.
Okay, so now we're gonna, sorry, we don't have any other questions on that slide. I'm going to move forward with, here's a timeline. This is still the same, right? We're at December 2025, we'll be presenting the first interim. And March 2026, we'll come with, you know, more data, six months worth of data for actuals. And we'll be able to project out for the remaining year for second interim. And then June, we have the adopted budget. And then September, an audit actual. December is the audit report. So December 16th, the plan is for our previous year alongside the first interim. You'll hear from our auditors as well. So they'll be coming to present their findings, if any, for the 2425 fiscal year. And so here are the assumptions that are going into the MYP. Enrollment does of 1031, CalPats coming in 327 students, nowhere than prior year enrollment. Talked about the unduplicated account being updated. ADA is updated to 95%. And here are some things that didn't make it in time for first interim, but we will add these for second interim. Greg and the Ed Services team will be presenting on their math textbook adoption that they'll need. We're estimating the cost approximately $1 million. And then special education, I mean, their needs continue to change based on IEPs and, you know, plans that are, the needs of our students. So yesterday, there was about seven new pair of positions based on IEPs that were created. So that cost wasn't able to make it into the first interim.
Can I ask, are those are in-house paras or are those contracts?
Those are in-house paras, yeah.
And Greg and the Ed Services team at our next meeting, I know we'll have a comprehensive conference item to go over the pros and cons of the math textbook adoption, both from an instructional pedagogical approach, but also from a potential cost savings approach.
Essentially, the math textbook adoption is a one-time purchase, right? And so we, we took a quick look at what that would do for our third year. It would drop your reserve to 3.22. But the special education needs, the parapositions, these are new parapositions, but we need to, there were some other parapositions that were abolished. So we need to see what the net impact was. So we want to have that conversation.
I have a question. So, you know, every time we talk about the budget, we share that we have 327 fewer students. But do we ever share the CD data? Because it's like, we're always sharing that. We have 300 students less than last year. But, I mean, I think it's important that people understand that it's, they're not available. And it always looks like we're losing students. We're not losing students. The students aren't available to be here. So it's like, do we ever share any city statistics or county statistics that are showing that that age group is just no longer here?
I really appreciate you asking that. So as you know, we had the state of the region report recently. One of the major contributors to that process is David Merron. David Merron has offered to come and give a brief summation of that as a conference item to the board. We were waiting for this next meeting, but he's confirmed his availability and willingness to do that. So if the board is open to that, I can confirm a time for David Merron to come and give a more specific presentation. He'll go over the broad county implications, but really try and focus on Ventura specifically.
Yeah, I think that would be important because I understand that people know that in order to be a large school district, you have to have the children to educate, right? But I think it's important for them to understand that it's not that we, we're doing something to have the students. They're not available, just like if it's a store and the census goes down. They can't stay in business because the people aren't there, aren't there. So I think that's something important to share so that they see that it's not something that we're doing internally to make 327 students go away. It could be that 300 students weren't here. 27 might be something that we can, that we can work with, but 300, which is no fault of our own because if you look at the statistics, they're not available.
I think, I think there is some statewide data available. So we could try to roll that into our first interim presentation to look at a macro level before we look at our district.
I think it would also potentially be helpful maybe for him to do one of your budget bites, right? Like to talk about, because for people to understand how population dynamics impacts the budget for the district in a way that's digestible for the average person, right? Like, you know, here's why it matters whether or not the person living next to you is an Airbnb or a family, right? Like.
Our next budget bite will be on kind of the school closures committee. And so that's part of what that is. And then we're also going to be sharing all of the data that the committee receives on the website as well. So demographic data, et cetera, as that becomes available to the committee.
And the, the episode that we just re-recorded today focuses on probably 70% of what you just said.
Okay, so with that, here is our, so what we have here is your unrestricted first interim multi-year projection from 2526 to 2728. That's what you're going to see on the 16th for the first interim. That's what we're required to present, but we're always looking at four to five years out. These business services, fiscal services, we're always looking five years out. So we've added what is our 2829 fiscal year, because that's right around the corner, right? Your adopted budget, which will be in June, will, you won't have 2526 fiscal year anymore. That'll be in the rears and you'll be dealing with 2627 all the way to 2829. So right now, as it currently stands with the three-year ending at fiscal year 2728, we're at a $10.7 million deficit and a 3.59% reserve. So as you can see, our reserve percentage is going from 955 to 7.62 to 3.59. And so budget adoption, which is in June, 2526, no more. So you'll start with 2627 and look at the next two years, which will land you at 2829. And in that, the picture, based on what we know now, the information that we do know now with the COLAs that we have now, which are like 3% in the out years, still 330 students declining across the board, 58% unduplicated percentage count. And the information we know about any of our one-time funding, that puts us at a negative $11.7 million in fiscal year 2829. And our, any fund balance is negative 1.7 million. So essentially, we're, that's a negative certification. And we do not meet our reserve dollars at 3%. Matter of fact, we're $2.1 million in the hole. So in order to meet 3%, we need $8 million. And so essentially, we would need $10 billion because you got to get 2 million to get out of the hole. Then you need another 8 million to meet your 3%.
So if you could just share, especially because we have some, some new people in the audience, what does that mean? So if we get a negative certification, what are the implications of that with a role with the county and perhaps the state?
So I was going to ask the same thing, but can you explain it from the viewpoint of, we can't wait? Because sometimes with our personal budgets, we might say, you know what, let me see what happens next month, just in case something comes up and we'll be able to afford it. But as a school district, you can't do that. You have to do the three years out and you have to say exactly what you're going to do. You can't, you can't do a budget to wait if something pops up.
So why, yes, why we can't wait is the decisions made for any March 15th reductions in force are done before we have any of the information from the state budget, right? We have to make those decisions strategically by timeline. And so that just puts the board at a position that if you wait right now doing nothing and go into fiscal year 2627 with the information that we have right now, we'll be negative certifying. Meaning it's the county, the state will potentially take over. And, yeah, I mean, there's layers. There's a fiscal stabilization plan that comes into play. And then essentially, if we don't give the county a plan to how we're going to stabilize the budget, the worst comes the worst scenario is that the state comes in and takes over our school district. And then they just forcibly make the cuts or make the, make the budget solvent again. I mean, there's a lot of steps in between. I'm just giving you.
No, I understand. I just, I just wanted to make sure, because the, you know, having a certified budget, a qualified budget, a negative budget, most people don't understand that parlance. And so I think it's.
Yeah, we want a certified positive. This, your ending balance is negative 1.7. So that would be a negative certification.
Yeah, the reason why I want you to do that is because I get a lot of questions when people say, why don't you just wait to see what happens? And as a board, we're not in a position to see, to wait what happens because the county and the state, they won't allow you to. They're not a wait and see. They're making decisions now so that we can see what's going to happen to the future. And I think that's kind of hard for some people to understand because something next year could happen and, you know, let's say 500 families with kids moved to Ventura. And it erases our decline from the 327. They will not allow us to wait for something like that, a miracle to happen. You have to act with the information you have now. And that's the only thing that they hold you accountable for is what you're doing right now for the next three years. So we cannot do a wait and see approach.
No, that's not best practice. Yeah, you don't want to wait to see, but what, you, the board has to make decision based on the information that's available to us. And I'm providing the information that I have, the most relevant information that we have at the time that we have. Make the decisions based on that. And then if something comes and changes the picture, you can always restore or change the, your decision at a later time.
So I just wanted to ask, when you're looking at projected expenses, that includes projected increases for health and welfare benefits for this year. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we have our updated health insurance costs. So we do have those budgeted in there. And there was about 7%. I mean, we don't know what it's going to be for the out years.
Right, but so, so from, from, like, so from 2526 to 2627, we know what that increase will look like in health and welfare contributions. But this does not reflect any potential salary increases. Is that correct?
Outside of step and column, which is about 1%, 1.2%, no.
I have one more question. Can you talk a little bit to some of the things that the district has put in place to, for cost savings, like our solar that should be, you know, helping with our energy costs and some things like that? I was wondering, because I, I don't want it to look like, you know, we've just stepped into this today. Like the district has been working towards solutions for a while.
Yeah, so we have, I mean, the district has signed on for the Healthy Campus, which is a building, right, medical building to, for the services we provide. But it is essentially, in the best case scenario, it's supposed to bring in about $2 million a year of savings. But it takes a while to get that program going. And we have to get a lot of commitment from the families to, you know, give us their insurance information. We have to process that insurance information. Reason I don't have that in the budget right now is because to date, I've only seen $1,000 of funds in the pipeline to be collected. It's too big of a variance to put a $2 million a year savings in. The solar savings, we still have not finished Ventura and Sheridan Way and Foothill. Interconnection, we're still waiting for sites to come online. So I haven't seen those actually come to fruition. Not saying that I'm not expecting it. I mean, once we start, once everything is live, construction is finished and interconnected, and we start seeing those reflected in our PGV bill. We do have a dashboard available that's, we could monitor the kilowatts being generated and energy savings. But we haven't, I haven't seen that on our bill. And so I've not included that in these projections.
Fair enough. And I'm just thinking about, you know, like our constituents that we meet at the grocery store. And they're like, well, why don't you just kind of wait and see? And we do have some things that we are waiting and seeing, but we just can't include them at this point. Is that correct?
Because the offset could be your PGV could raise the utility rates to cut it up. I don't know. So those are the things that, till I see it come to fruition on the PGV bill. And we're actively having our staff monitor each site's bill. So keeping a tight.
Or it could be an offset situation where we could save $2 million next year. But then we adopt the curriculum that we have to adopt and it costs $2 million to. So that's the reason why we don't, you know, say, oh, we're going to use this because we might have to pay for something else. And it's good when it happens, but it's just an offset.
Yeah, it could be textbook, it could be potential litigation, it could be, there's a lot of variables.
Yeah, and Dr. Merz, I'll just add, and a good example of that, you don't need to go back to the slide, is the increase in special ed costs, right? We have been giving the board updates. We had talked about some of the transfers from contracted services to employees, which has been good. Like you've talked about the work that we've been doing over multiple years. That is stabilized, but at any moment, we have to, and it is our, it is both a privilege and an obligation to serve families and students with disabilities. I want to make sure that I say that. And that comes with a cost to do it and to do it well. That's another example of a cost that just between our last update, which was a month ago, that is a half a million dollars in additional expenditures that we could not have budgeted for.
So on top of that, I mean, I could give you a little preview of what's to come on Tuesday. So a good example of that in our special education low incidence funds, we have a million dollars, to save like 1.2 million dollars this year to fully spend. Our next year's allocations are only $230,000. So you're going to see that steep decrease just right away for the special education revenue.
Dr. Merz, on the numbers you presented here, if you presented the 26 through 29 budget as a budget for, to the county, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have us go out as negative next year. It'd be the third year out. They would be, which means next year, we'd get one of those nasty letters from the county superintendent saying, you got to do something.
Yeah. Essentially, it's called a fiscal stabilization plan. So the board would have to commit to what their plan is and provide it to them in writing. Essentially, it's a reduction plan.
Yeah, I, I just want to start having plane talk conversations about this because we're coming up on some major decisions. And, you know, people have probably already got all the emails that we're literally looking for a committee, for a school closure committee. So it's not, if it's going to happen, we're actually taking the steps because it's going to happen. That's the only reason you form a committee is because you know you have to, you know, make a decision. And I just want to start making sure that people understand and have plain, nameless talk conversations so that no one is surprised when we're putting steps in place, when we know what we, what we have to do. Because, you know, since I've been on the board, what I've heard in the past is, we didn't hear that was coming. No one told us that you were going to do this. So I want to make sure for my part that any major decisions, that we start talking about it so people understand that it's coming, so that when it's here, we don't have a full room of people upset saying, I didn't know you were going to, I didn't know you were talking about closing schools at all. We are going to be talking about it. We send out an email. If you want to be part of the committee, there are steps for, to apply, but it's just things that we need to talk about every meeting so that people understand what kind of decisions that we're facing.
And even with the school closure committee, like once it's developed, it's a whole process. And it takes a year in itself just with the committee to come up with the report, to make recommendations to the board. Then if the board decides to accept those recommendations, you got to go through the surplus committee, 7-11, to decide what to do with those. It's about a two-year, two to three-year process in itself.
And they'll just tack on that we're not looking at closing schools just to close schools, right? We're looking at closing schools because it will save the district money, right? So it's an additional way that the school district can maintain an appropriate size for the students that we currently serve.
And I'll just, going back to a comment that Dr. Danberg made about the letters that we get from the county superintendent. I happen to have the pleasure of doing site visits with the county superintendent today. And Dr. Morales is very aware, as the board knows, we receive updates via correspondence, lauding the board for the very tough decisions that have been made to date. But also, there's always that caveat and the reminder about the work that's still ahead. You were talking about plane talks. And we had plane talk today with the county superintendent. Just, you know, very appreciative of the challenges that not just our district faces, but that other districts face in an era of declining revenue and declining enrollment. So he's very aware of that and understands that we're doing everything that we can to not put ourselves in a position where we would have a negative certification three years from now.
Okay, and then finally Legislative Analyst Office is an entity or a company out there. It's like, they're like school services. They look at the state of affairs, state budget, look at what's upcoming for the state budget outlook. And so they're concluding early, right now that the budget position is weak. Their forecast is, the state budget's an $18 billion budget problem in fiscal year 2627. It's growing to $35 billion annually, starting in 2728. Our projected COLA, they're showing for fiscal year 2627 is 2.51%, which is already a decrease in what we have budgeted at first interim. We have a first interim 3% plus, right there, we estimate, sorry, 3.52%. So that's quite a bit of a cut. There's no reason to jump at this right now. We'll wait till the governor's January budget and then we'll be providing updates at second interim.
I was just going to share that I had the opportunity to sit down with State Senator Monique Lumone two weeks ago. And she was very direct. I was with the. I was with a group of other school board members and she basically said, look, the state is being asked to backfill a lot of the federal cuts in health uh and healthcare and mental health services. And so those things will impact the funding that is available for Prop ninety eight and for um any kind of categorical expenditures that the the state has options for in education. And I think, um, you know, that she did not take off the table uh deferrals or other um kind of budget maneuvers, which I appreciate personally, I always appreciate the fact she's super honest and very directive. Much prefer that to somebody who just tells you what they want when you're sitting there and then does something different. But um, but I think we do have to be ready, right? Because um with all the federal cuts, the state is gonna be under a lot of pressure to preserve services for people who really are vulnerable and need those, and it's not just in education.
And for a plain person like me, the deferral means we're budgeting that they're gonna give us, say, ten million dollars. And they say, we're gonna give it to you, but now when we say we're gonna give it to you, we're gonna defer it six months down the line. And then it's up to us to figure out how we're gonna live that six months without the money that they said they were gonna give us.
Continue to operate your.
You can plan for it, they said they're gonna give it to you, but they also reserve the right to say, I'll give it to you later. And then we have to come up with something to figure out how the pay goes.
Yes, when simply put means we have to borrow money to make payroll and we have to pay interest on that money we borrow, so we lose money in the end.
And Dr. Merza, since we're talking about that, um, can you just share a moment uh about the board's resolution and how, what we do for cash flow issues? We are positioned to be able to handle short-term cash flow issues.
Yes, yes, our cash flow is positive. The board approved the transfer uh previous fiscal year, so we have the money set aside. Actually, okay, I'm giving you previews. We're actually earning uh interest on it as we speak. I think you'll see that reflected at first, it was like two hundred thousand dollars of uh interest during on that revenue. But we haven't used it, it's just sitting there in case we need to.
Okay, um, so again, board, um, this is our, I think, our third um update of this. We just wanted to ensure that as the assumptions have shifted uh between the first draft, uh M Y P, right Joey? Draft version, um, we, that you should hopefully feel like there are no surprises coming into uh next week's meeting with First In Room. Thank you for the previews of things that we'll be seeing. Um, and that agenda will be posted by Friday um for you and for the public to see. Uh, but effectively, we hope that um giving these updates along the way uh puts the board and the public in a better understanding of what the budget outlook and what our budget projections will look like for this, not just for this uh ending of the fiscal year, but also for the next three years.
President Peterson, we do have two public comments this evening when you're ready.
Actually, sorry, before we get that, um, so I just wanted to kind of flip back to um the multi-year twenty six, twenty twenty nine, because I was just reflecting on what you said, Dr. Merza. So in fiscal year twenty eight, twenty nine, uh, in order to achieve the reserve dollars that we're required to have, um, we'd need to be at eight million, which would mean that we need to cut over three years, three million dollars each year in order to get to a place where we're at total accumulative savings of ten million dollars.
Yes, so your reserve dollars at, um, once again, it's with the information we know now. Uh, for twenty eight, twenty nine, you're at negative two million, so you climb out of that whole verse, right? So you'd be two point one million to get to zero, then you need another eight million on top of that. So you need ten million dollars to meet your three percent.
Yeah, and the reason I bring this up is just that, you know, we're not gonna get to a place where we would, in the third year out, cut ten million, ten million dollars, right? So the way that uh, when we look at these things, the way that we look at them is how we can budget that over cumulative three years to get to that number.
Yes.
Right? Uh, but again, things change and sometimes things get better or worse. But like right now, at this snapshot in time, that's what we're looking at.
Yes.
And then when we're also talking about like ongoing expenses, if we're cutting them in year one, then we get the cumulative benefit of being able to reduce a smaller amount upfront and getting that cumulative benefits as opposed to.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to be clear.
And the next time we show our enrollment number, the difference from last year like that, three twenty seven, can we put next to it what that means in dollars? Because I think that's important for people to see that if you have three hundred and twenty seven fewer students than the year before, what does that equate, equate to A D A and what we're dealing with? We're not just dealing with the money from the county and the state going away. We're dealing with, if you don't have those students, you don't even get the same money that you had last year. So I think that difference for the public to see what three hundred and twenty seven students means to us is important.
And we, I could give an approximate, re- really, our funding is based off of A D A and average daily attendance and our and each grade span, like grades K to three are funded at a certain level, the next set is funded at all the way. So it varies, but yes, I could give a a general estimate of what it would cause, what it what it looks like to lose that much money to our students.
Do you have any other questions?
Just wondering if maybe there's a different way to reflect that um on this. Maybe um like in the header um below the year, put what our projected A D A is for that year. So that way we can see kind of the, you know, the the number of students and then the revenue right below it, as opposed to like another chart that we're then flipping back and forth. Like if it were there represented in a way, maybe that would be easier. Because I agree, I think people, um, it's hard to quantify what it means, like when we lose, you know, ten kids, like, even though we staff classrooms at, you know, twenty five or thirty two to one, right? Thirty kids doesn't just generate one teacher's salary. It generates, you know, significantly more than that, right? It pays for all the other stuff. And so um when we lose ten kids and we lose a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that's, you know, that's impacting everything, not just the classroom environment, right?
We we will absolutely do that. We'll, we'll, we'll do both. Um, if you remember from previous presentations, we had that a whole slide on A D A enrollment changes the amounts. We'll have that there, but we will find a way to add that in in a way that's meaningful. Because even though we're talking about now an update in um three hundred and thirty students, when we had previously budgeted, you know, two fifty versus three hundred versus thirty, that diff, it's really the difference that's affecting the budget. It's that extra thirty students that are lost that then changes the budget projection because we would have already accounted for two hundred and fifty or three hundred students lost.
Yeah, I always, I just think we we always put the number of students, right? But we don't put that equals this much in A D A. Regardless if it's just the negative from two hundred to three twenty seven, which is one twenty seven, which is a difference. I still think it's important to say that just the fact of three hundred and twenty seven students at any time equals this millions of dollars.
Any other questions on the board before we go to public comment? Okay.
Thank you. So good evening, you all have three minutes to speak this evening and I will give you a thirty second uh update and warning. Uh, just a reminder, before we begin, we would like to remind everyone that the governing board recognizes the impact that stability has in the effective operation of the district, including its role in creating a safe and positive school climate. The board believes that everyone should be treated with dignity and respect in their interactions within the school community. The board understands that the First Amendment provides strong protection for speech. However, the board also expects that all speech, expression, and action will follow the norms of civil behavior on district grounds, in facilities, and in meetings. Please remember that sometimes we do have students here, I don't know if we have any today, but please keep language as respectful as possible. Please also note, the microphone in at the podium is calibrated, just speak right on in and you'll be able to be heard. We have two speakers this evening, John Gustafson is up first and then Joanne Young Myers.
Okay, uh, so, yeah, there was a lot of stuff up there that I admit I did not understand. However, what I do understand is transparency. Now, the one issue that I can see that, and there again, I'm trying to be constructive here. The fact that this was a special board meeting instead of on a normal schedule when it would have been televised is huge because it has to do with the budget. And everyone here and there is affected by the budget. So I would have liked to have seen some of the fluff that happens during the normal board meetings move to a special board meeting. So that way, this stuff is all agendized and out there in advance. Uh, for your guys' benefit as well as ours. I mean, we are in negotiations right now and there's supposed to be some trust there, which, let's face it, guys, it's kind of spread thin right now after what happened last year. Um, school closures. Now, I understand that school closures are a big thing and Ohio Unified did it too. We have declining enrollment, that's nothing new, it's a statewide thing. Everybody's dealing with this. If we have to close schools, let's close schools. But keep in mind, when you do that, you still have to maintain those schools. So although you can lay off the teachers that were there, you're still gonna have to have classified employees maintaining those properties unless you sell the properties. If you don't sell the properties and you rent them out, you better make sure that your rent for that property compensates for the money you're gonna lose from the students going to that private school. Because that is a big thing. You know, a lot of people who are moving here from out of state can afford to put their kids in private school. Um, I'm actually going to stop there. So just some words of wisdom from, I need to get in the shop.
Hi, everybody, good evening. My name is Joanne Young Myers. I currently work at Ventura High School. And I want to thank you all for being transparent and continually to let us know what's happening with our budget and sending out the emails because it's important. Everybody needs to read our emails, look at what's going on and under, and just know that we're here and we're concerned because it's our jobs, it's our livelihood that we're looking at possibly going away. Um, and then putting, you know, how is this gonna affect our families? Not just the families we're serving, but also the families that work for Ventura Unified. Um, it's, it's a big process, I understand that, and I'm glad that we see a three-year three years out so that you're letting us know what we're projecting. Uh, and the three million a year that we needed to, you know, save to put in reserves in order to catch up to that ten million by then, that's a lot. That is a huge, huge deficit. Um, as I know and everyone here, we value our jobs. You know, I've been with the district, I'm working on my twenty-first year. So twenty-one years, I wanted to be here, I enjoy coming to work. I wanted to serve the students and the parents that come in and need help. And all of us have a responsibility, but we're here because we want to be. You know, it's not because we have to be, it's because we choose to be in this profession. We choose to be here at this school district. Um, it means a lot for myself that the transparency be gone, as you're saying, and that you're allowing us to see more of the budget information detailed. Because if we don't know, we just don't know. Like a lot of people, when I've talked about A D As, they go, what's that? I'm like, okay, you look for a school district, you understand our average daily attendance funds are from the, you know, students who attend school. And they're like, well, really? And I'm like, well, how else do you think, you know, this is funded? So being able to give our, I don't know, our union members, thirty second. Uh, our classified certified employees the opportunity to see what matters. And to let us know as employees that we matter as well. Because we're all in this together. And just we have to work in order to keep our civilized community and our own hearts.
Yeah, thank you. And and this is one of the reasons why me when I say uh plain talk, because I know we put the information out there and we say it's school closures, right? Sometimes I think we need to go to a secondary level to understand what school closure is. It's not that we're doing it to not occupy the building, right? When you do a stu, a school closure, there's a whole bunch of other things that that go in. So we wouldn't close the school and then maintain the building. Like closing the school should mean that you're gonna get out of that building and you you you're not gonna have a staff working, you know, on that property. So I think sometimes, even though we put the information out there and that we're in the business of running schools, I think sometimes we need to do that second and third level explanation and it explain what that means. Because it wouldn't benefit us to close a school and then still have to have the crew to work the school, right? Like it's, it does a lot of things that come in with the school closure. And I just want to make sure that we're getting that information out there when we say. We can't take for granted that people understand that if we do this, 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 and this happens. I think we need to do a better job as a district to say, here's where we're going. But when we go here, this, this, and this happens also. That's how we're depending on saving the money when we do something like that. So as a, as a board and as a member of the board, I'm gonna do my best to make sure that the communication is out there, not just the first thing we're gonna do, but that second and third level too, I think that'll benefit us.
And you're looking at me, so I'm just gonna respond to one thing, and that is that, um, uh, the one thing I don't want to do is make assumptions of what the board plans on doing. This board has not decided that it would sell any properties, it hasn't decided if we would move here and move to another. So I I am trying to be careful with how and what we put out there because I do not want to make assumptions as to what you all would do with a property. Right now, we're just looking at, do we need to consider closing and or consolidating schools? And I've made it very clear in the communication or two that we've sent so far um that the property sale would be a completely separate process with the seven eleven committee. So I totally agree with what you're saying and we're actually planning for the next video. Um, but I also need to be very careful with what I say because I don't want to make assumptions on what you all plan on doing.
Absolutely, and that's why I said it's my job as a board member to put that out there because I'm part, part of the decision-making process. And if we just say one thing, then you have a section of people, you might have three different groups saying, well, if you're gonna do that, why are you not doing this? It's not that we're not doing it, we need to voice it more as a board, I think, to say, because of we're doing this, this is probably what's gonna happen next. And I think we need to focus on what we are projecting to happen next to explain to the public this. And so I'm not, I'm looking at you because you do all the communication and so.
Oh, everyone does communication, but I would then.
I'm saying it's, it's our responsibility, it's our responsibility to put it out there so that you can communicate it. But we have to put it out there first. And I'm saying as a board and myself, we need to do a better job about talking about this.
And I would highly encourage you then, and I I've offered this in the past, we have our newsletter, it has a board section. If that's something that you want to utilize to get a message out to your community, I'm happy to put that in there. There are just deadlines and content uh dates um that have to be met, but other than that, that might be another good way to get that message out.
Uh, nomination, Brina.
Um, I just wanted to, um, I'm not supposed to respond directly to public comments, but I will just say, um, I hear the comments about uh transparency and about do it, holding these conversations during our regularly scheduled board meetings. We have done that and we will continue to do that. Um, this, the the whole sort of framework of a special board meeting is really to allow us to ask more questions because in our regularly scheduled meetings, there's typically so much uh scheduled that it's kind of hard to just take a breath and focus on just the budget. But the next board meeting next Tuesday will have a budget conversation that will be fully televised. Um, and of course, like, we're happy to have the public here and to have um people participating and and asking questions because it just makes us better. We ask better questions when we hear those questions from other people. So always appreciate the questions, they're definitely not dumb. And um, you know, I think we learned a lot during last year's process and we're trying to to be better, right? So that's, that's what I would just uh put out there.
So that's, that's what I would just put out there.
And I'll just comment broadly under the auspices of budget, this board has done a lot related to surplus properties. We've gone through, we had to wait for the State Board of Education to reaffirm the waivers, which we've received last month. The board is up and aggressive about putting out the requests for proposals for the RFPs, that deadline passed last week, we're gonna be bringing back that to the board as soon as we can. So although, again, we don't know necessarily what will happen with, if we were to close schools, that's obviously a board prerogative, but one of the things that, that I've noticed about the speed that we're working with, we have an idea of how to go through these processes, and so I think our, our community is, is really benefiting from the fact that we've been through this process and we don't need to wait. We, we know what the, how we can move through, and we're fortunate also to have some really good partners in, in this space, so I, I'm, I'm looking forward to, to some, obviously the decisions are hard, but the decisions that we make to benefit our, our students and our community, those are already in process too, because we were under the, the general topic about, about not waiting, we also aren't waiting to see what happens, we're doing some things right now that are in process, so those are also part of the solution.
And to piggyback on the broad conversation of board meetings, there are certain things that we have timelines that we have to do, so we cannot say, let's not talk about this on a regular scheduled board meeting, because there are certain timelines that we're bound to, that since we only have meetings scheduled so often, that we cannot not do certain things. So when we have a meeting, there's a structure of things that has to get, that have to get done, and a special board meeting, so we can concentrate on one single subject. During a regular scheduled board meeting, that's impossible, because there's timelines that we have to meet, where other things cannot happen unless we approve something on that, on that agenda. So that's why special board meetings are important for us, because we get to just concentrate and put all of our brain power on one subject, and you, it is impossible to do that during a regular scheduled board meeting.
I know we don't have board comment on this agenda, but I feel compelled. One of the things that, like, we can talk about our district budget, and one of the things I hope people take away is that the issue with district, our district budget, all of our neighboring districts' budgets, is California underfunds public education, right? Like, we underfund public education compared to every other state that is comparable to us in the United States, far worse than most other developed countries. We don't put our money into our youth, and that is the reason that we have these conversations about how to make hard choices versus, this hard choice versus that hard choice versus the other hard choice. And, you know, we, this board advocates a lot at the state level federally to try and preserve education funding, but that's unfortunately the harsh reality of all of this, is that we are handed a pile of money to say, do your best with this, and we don't get to say how much we get, right? Because this is public education, and unfortunately, it's at the whim of others how we get our funding. But, so I just, I want people to understand that if, if, if any of us had the ability to raise the amount of money we had so that we could do all the things we know are good for kids, we would 100% do it tomorrow.
Before I entertain any motion for adjournment, is there any other comments from the board? Hey, I entertain a motion.
I'll move to adjourn. I'm sorry. Thank you, Vadas Phalas, trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
Trustee Fredericks?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Forsythe? I'm sorry, trustee Piquers?
Yes.